Kathy just texted, she's having some problems. I'm gonna give her a quick call.
Jackie, do you have the updated interview questions that I sent today?
I believe so.
Okay, they had some bread in them, yeah.
Yes, I do, thank you so much.
I just sent it to Jim and Andrew.
Are candidates coming, starting right at six, or is it offset a little bit? Well?
I think the first candidate is scheduled at 6 o'clock, I believe.
Okay, at the top of the hour, okay. I didn't know if we had a couple minutes in between.
What we're doing, Jim, is that the first candidate will sign on at six and then Jessica will let him into the room. And then the second candidate will be ready at 7:30, but if we're delayed or we're early, I will inform that candidate.
Okay.
Diane, I'm planning on turning over the moderation of the interview to you. Do you have in mind sort of a process for deliberation after?
I do.
Okay, good.
And here comes Kathy.
Great. Great. All right then.
Recording in progress.
Let's call a meeting to order at, is it 6:01? We are meeting remotely and this is a special meeting to, for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of assessor with Scioto Township. Because we are meeting remotely pursuant to the state guidelines, please, when the clerk calls a roll, please indicate your, the township in which you are located and the county as well. Please call the roll.
Out of the way.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Palmer?
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Flinton, I'm present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Corto?
Present in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Jerome, absent. Noel?
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel, absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. For the purposes of this special meeting, I am turning over moderation to the township's human resources consultant, Diane Benson. And so Diane, it's your, your agenda.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure, Kathy, do you have the latest questions that I sent out today?
Yes, I do.
Perfect, perfect.
And Diane, sorry, one logistical question. I put Chris Bang in the waiting room. Is that where you'd like him right now, or would you like me to?
I think he can join us.
Okay, I didn't want to be rude.
Good evening, Chris.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good, good. So, we're going to be, I have, this is the Board of Trustees. We don't have everybody here, and we have a couple of trustees that are absent. But what first I would like to do is have each trustee or officer introduce him or herself. And then I'll talk a little bit about how we're going to proceed this evening.
Okay.
Okay, whoever wants to go first. Will?
Well, Chris, it's good to see you again. We met during the preliminary interview. I'm the supervisor for Scioto Township and I'm glad that you could join us for the, for the, for this interview with the Board of Trustees.
Donna?
Chris, I'm Donna Palmer, I'm the treasurer. So, we'll be working fairly close at certain times of the year.
Yes.
Hi, Chris, I'm Jessica Flinton. I'm the clerk here. It's really good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Jackie?
Hi, Chris, I'm Jackie Corto. I'm a new Board of Trustee member. Looking forward to getting to know you and what you have to bring to township.
Hello, I'm Kathy Noel, also a trustee. Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, Chris, like we did before in the other interview that we had, we're going to be asking you a variety of questions. Some are based on your past experience and some questions are situational. We will give you an ample opportunity to, for you to ask questions at the end of the interview. And what we're going to be doing is rotating through each member of the Board of Trustees and, one at a time, to ask questions and different questions than last time, some different. So Kathy will be the first one to start out. Chris, could you tell us about your work experience and how it fits into the Scioto Township assessor position?
I've been with Washtenaw County Equalization Department now for combined 18 years. Started there in 2003. Prior to that, I spent one year in the treasurer's office. I worked for Sue Boss. And so, I've got a little familiar with the treasury. My first years, my first eight years in equalization were, I functioned as a personal property auditor. So, and I still carry that role for the county, personal property auditor. Starting 2011, my work shifted to more real property appraisals. With that, I took on pedley calculations, I did a little bit of a portionment report. I did role reviews coming into the county from the various units. So, more or less, we've had like a bird's eye view of what's happening in each equalization, I'm sorry, each assessing unit. This would allow me to, to get into the minutia of assessing versus just looking at the big picture for the last 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jess?
Chris, after learning about this opportunity, what prompted you to take the next step and apply for this job?
Well, I believe I'm, I'm ready for a new challenge. I'm still growing, even in, even in the equalization area, but I think I'm ready for a new challenge. I think I'm ready to, to help, you know, a department, organization move forward and improve in whatever ways, you know, are positive. So, just, just ready for new challenges, I suppose.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Will?
So what would you have liked to do more of in your last position? What, what held you back?
I think I would have liked to have been a little more involved with budgeting, I think, or just a big picture type of work. I did, you know, do some accounts payable. I did some purchasing for the department. I've had about every role. There's some things that I was not as heavily involved in, like the sales ratio study. I did do one year of sales ratio, one year study. But I've had, I've had a pretty decent exposure to the whole process. Maybe the actual equalization report itself and how that's put together as well. I've been involved on a tangent level with every, probably every facet of equalization. So, yeah, you could always go deeper if opportunity's there.
Okay, next is Donna.
Chris, what, what are your qualifications in your area of expertise? That is, what skills do you have that would make you the best candidate for this position?
Well, I think I have, I have a good, a good approach to handling taxpayers. I try to be respectful of their needs and concerns. I try to be very diplomatic in the way I deal with coworkers or with people outside of the department. I try to be helpful. If I'm not helpful, I don't pass people off to, to the next person in line. I try to find the right person to help them and have them, have them solve their problem. So, I think that I enjoy problem solving. I enjoy challenges. I seem to rise to the occasion when I'm given some tasks that are a little bit out of my comfort zone, but those push me. I enjoy seeing myself grow as a result of being under pressure. I seem to work okay under pressure.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into some questions that are, that are particular to assessing and appraisal. So we'll have Jackie ask the first question.
Thank you. So I wonder if you could tell us about your experience preparing for and defending the city or township, or I guess in your case, the county, at the Michigan Tax Tribunal?
My exposure to the tax tribunal has been basically in responding to claim, not claims, but appeals from the attorneys, discussing with attorneys, talking to taxpayers, coordinating all that discussion. Hopefully coming to a resolution so it doesn't get farther than, than just, you know, the preliminary phase. I've also had some experience with appearing before the State Tax Commission on petitions that were initiated by our office, by me specifically. That, that was more heavy during my first years of equalization work as a personal property auditor exclusively. Less so in the latter years because I had moved more and more into the real property side of assessing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy? Yes. What things do you consider when a taxpayer asks you for an adjustment to their assessment?
Well, I would, I would say the first is, you know, how reasonable their request is and what, what evidence, if I can use that word, or what, what arguments they're bringing forward. Are these legitimate arguments or just, well, I've got this foreclosure here, foreclosure there, so I must be in the same boat. You really have to compare apples to apples. You have to listen to the reason, are they just looking for something or maybe testing the waters to see if you're just gonna, just roll over and say, okay, fine, we'll drop it a little bit? I think it has to be illegitimate. You have to respect them, you know, respect their, their argument. But, but you have to weigh it to see if it's legitimate or if it's just testing, testing the assessor to see if they can, they can move the value.
Thank you. Jess?
So Chris, what types of commercial or industrial property are you most experienced assessing?
We, when, when we're doing either appraisal work for the equalization studies or actual assessing work in the, in the units that Washtenaw County does assessing for, we really don't separate out any particular industries. It's a, it's a matter of picking random samples and going onto those. In terms of assessing, it's just looking at the tier. Whatever happens to compete in the tier, we'll get a review. Now, to be sure, the units that we handle in Washtenaw County are smaller units, not as heavily commercial and industrial as side of this. But our appraisal studies within the equalization context would, would see everybody from a large automotive manufacturer to a smaller, a smaller commercial business. So, I think I have a decent understanding of the whole gamut. I had a, I think my experience as a personal property auditor did expose me to, to commercial industrial, you know, appraisals. I'll be from a personal property end, but there's a lot of old, so I have that, that background that I think helps me as well.
Thank you. Okay, Will?
Can you help us understand the disabled veteran property tax exemption and how it works?
My exposure to the disabled veteran property exemption has been really scrutinizing how assessors are treating that, you know. As an exemption, it should become an office loss, a losses to the local unit. As I understand it, the Veterans Administration would issue a certificate that they are in fact unable to work and are qualified. And based on that certificate from the Veterans Administration, it's either yes or no. They, they can apply for veterans exemption from property taxes and I believe even their SPAS.
Donna?
How do you handle the assessing of routine maintenance and repairs on residential property?
Routine maintenance, I mean, I'm thinking Matthew Gast. Obviously, if we're talking about Matthew Gast, yeah, that shouldn't, that should not be new additions. It should, should not be adding to the value of the property if we're talking about windows, siding and roofing. That's something that you would not pick up now. To be sure, I believe that there is a, there was at some point in time, there was a, an actual application that didn't fill out for Matthew Gast. I believe that's been done away. So, I think the general understanding is if it's repair and maintenance, that's not something that you would add value as new additions. If you're just replacing siding or windows or roofing.
So what you're saying, Chris, is everything, not everything, but generally the guidelines in many things are all guided by a state statute.
Yeah, Matthew Gast is, is I think what it's called. Now, it can raise the value of that property, the equalized value, but, you know, I've gotten not the tax. It shouldn't be an addition.
I'm not familiar with this term that you used. What, what do you call it?
It's called the Matthew Gast Act.
Matthew Gask?
G A S T.
Gast, okay. I should have, but I've never heard of it.
No problem.
Okay.
Oh, I wonder if you could tell us, please, Chris, what was the most challenging property that you have evaluated? And tell us about your process in doing that.
Well, I think, I guess I would point to not necessarily a real property parcel, but actually a personal property parcel. We had a utility company reporting assets on one of the units that we assessed. And basically, what the tax rep or the tax manager was doing, they were moving costs from, from an appreciating table to, you know, a depreciating table. They're basically gaining some, some advantages by moving costs around. So, it ended up, two or three years, I refused to accept their changes. And I stood my ground out. I said, no, this is something I've already consulted the state on. You're not supposed to be moving value from this table to another table just because you think that it qualifies for that table. These were pipeline assets and they moved everything that was above ground to a table that was much more favorable. So I stood my ground for two or three years and finally, the third year, he was actually surprised. Well, you've been moving that cost all along? I said, yes. You've moved it into the wrong table and I moved it back into the right table. So eventually, in the third year, he said, okay, we'll start reporting now. But everybody else in the state, I'm not everyone in the state, I shouldn't, I shouldn't generalize. Many other assessors would just say, hey, well, they're reporting in a table and see a dramatic drop. Especially this unit is, is heavy, heavy in utility, personal property. And, and that's, that's a lot of value that you're giving up. And, and eventually, the third or second or third year or fourth year, they said, okay, you know, this is not going to work. Our strategy's not going anywhere. We're going to start reporting. I think that, that's one that comes to mind where it took, it took a little, a little time, a little patience, insistence, you know, being firm with the taxpayer and then eventually them understanding that, look, you know, I've got, I've got my back up on this. I'm not moving from this position. And this is how it's going to be.
Kathy?
Okay. How do you stay up to date with changing assessment, assessing requirements, new legislation, recent court cases and best practices?
Well, the state does put out a yearly course on that, where they used to. I'm not sure if the pandemic has kind of stopped that at this point, we'll see. Where they discuss important topics to the assessing field. And it's a very informative class. Of course, we do look over bulletins. Sometimes in the department, we have, especially if there's a very important bulletin comes up, we have a time where we review those bulletins, the new instructions, and then come together to get an understanding. What happened, what's, what's different? What's happening with the legislation? More often than not, I like, I like to consult people in the county, in the assessing field that I trust and respect. Especially when, when there was a new legislative system that came out with ENPP, understanding how that worked out. That was kind of a complex subject. So just talking to assessors and trying to understand exactly what the law is prescribing for us is important. So I like, basically, I like to study the legislation, but also surround myself with people that I can trust and, and kind of see their angle on the same legislation.
Could you explain what you just referred to, ENPP? What is that?
Well, that was the ultimate manufacturing personal property exemption that came out, that started in 2016. The legislation was set into motion in 2012. That started the small taxpayer exemptions for a few years. And then eventually the ENPP started to kick in where, where value that was associated with ENPP filings was transferred from the local, ad verum local, to the state assessing, to ISA, essential services assessment. So it became a state assessed asset. And there's always, there's always going to be movement between the state and the local, depending on how they're paying their taxes, how they're filing their, their statements. So there's always going to be some kind of a ping pong match between the state and the local unit.
Hey, Jess?
Chris, please tell us about your experience with special assessment districts.
I'd say my, my, well, special assessment districts, are you referring to special assessment properties or districts?
Special assessment districts, which is a, SADs often referred to. It's a tool that the township and others may use.
Like I, not IFTs, but capture districts, like the, no.
Donna? It would be perhaps the kind of members or citizens of an area may want, say, their road fixed. So, that kind of.
I was on a different train of thinking. So, the special assessment districts, such as drains and the like, special assessment maybe for some kind of road improvement. My experience has been just, just understanding it, not having dealt with it directly from the county level because our smaller units of government that we, we handle assessing for do not have those districts. As far as equalizing it, I don't, I don't believe that that's something that, that we, that enters the equalization process in any way. More or less a treasury type function, if I'm not mistaken? Is that more on the treasury dock or?
I'm sorry?
Is it a collection type function mostly?
Well, each property within a district, when it's established, they're assessed the cost
I see.
to cover and pay over time, the, the purpose that, like the road being improved or generally we've had roads.
So that cost is spread over the parcels that are affected or benefiting from that, I understand.
And, and then it's put on the tax roll, usually on the December billing?
I see. And that's via millage, not a unique assessment, correct?
It's generally a millage against the taxable value. We do have one that is a fee per property.
I see. So it's, it's an additional millage to cover the total cost of the improvement.
Correct.
Yeah, I understand how it works. Noel never had to deal with it directly on the county side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I am next. I do have a clarification question for you, Chris. What communities do you work with in Washtenaw County? What specifically, what communities?
Two smaller units that have hired the county for assessing are Freedom Township and Selina Township.
And my question is, in layman's terms, can you explain the principle of highest and best use?
Okay, so the highest, best use is, is the use that will bring the, the most return or most income to a certain property. Let's say you have a residential property along Jackson Road. It's obvious that Jackson, the Jackson Road quarter is not, the residential use is not the highest and best use. What would bring the highest return, highest income, that would probably be some type of commercial operation, depending on the size of the lot and other considerations that would impact that property. So, yeah, whatever brings the highest, highest return or income to that property.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to some other questions away from assessing. And maybe one snuck in there somewhere. Will?
Chris, tell us about a time when you thought someone was not listening to you and what, what did you do in that situation?
Not listening. Not listening. Well, um, what I would, what I would do just to confirm that they understood or that I didn't just, you know, speak to my, to myself is I would ask, maybe some probing questions to understand that they actually got what I was trying to tell them. I wouldn't just regurgitate whatever I just said, but maybe just gently say, okay, well, do you understand what the ramifications are for this? Do you plan, something, something to do with, with the subject at hand that would let me, let me to understand that they understood what I said and that I explained it in a way that they could really grasp the concept? Do you, do you need an actual example of when something like that happened or?
If you want to give an example, that's, you're welcome to do so.
I'm trying to think of something. I can't think of anything offhand, but sometimes when I, when I help maybe a coworker do a certain task that I was responsible for in the past and now that that's been handed out to other people, I just, I just ask the question, you remember, you know, we dealt this, this before, we, these are the steps. This is why you need to do this in this order because the information is coming from, from this side of the equation, not from the other side. So it's kind of hard to explain, but the idea is I, I try to help them help themselves. And if they're not listening, it's, it's either because it's, it's a little bit too much for them and then I have to start again and move slower so they can, they can understand the concept. I can't think of a unique situation.
That's fine. Thank you.
Donna.
Chris, have you had a time that you used your technical knowledge to solve a problem that appeared to be unsolvable?
Technical knowledge.
These are the harder questions.
You're trying, trying to think of an exact scenario. Well, I try, I try to use Excel as much as I can. It's helpful in digesting a lot of information. Unsolvable problem. I think all problems are solvable to some degree. It's just a matter of how you approach it. Sometimes they seem impossible. I'm trying to think. Let's see here. Can't think of anything offhand other than. Well, yeah, maybe you can skip and I could think about it in the meantime.
You gave it a fair shot.
Yes.
Okay, Jacqueline.
Can you give an example of a time when you quickly had to change project priorities? And how do you do it?
Well, I mean, I guess the best way to, to do things is to, if something comes in and it's urgent and needs to be handled right now, I would try to button up whatever I'm doing, get it to a point where I can readily pick it up once I'm finished with this emergency. I think the, what helps me is to get it to a point where I've made notes to myself. I said, okay. And this kind of deals with the way I prepare for work. Is if I'm, I'm looking at a problem and I'm asking questions and I'm probing and I'm probing, I try to write those questions down and not just create myself a, a point of reference. So when I have to pick that task that I put down, when I have to pick it up again, I can kind of bring myself into the train of thought I left that certain task and I can just jump right in versus taking the, the project and having to think, think about it for a longer period of time and maybe wasting time and resources doing it. So just writing notes, making notes to myself, saying, this needs to happen. I still have this left to do with this project. Set that aside and then move on to something else.
Thank you.
Kathy.
What have you done to further your knowledge of diversity? Have you included diversity in your professional development? How have you demonstrated what you have learned? So there are actually three questions.
Diversity. For me, I have a pretty diverse background in the sense that I'm, I'm a naturalized U.S. citizen. I, I have been acquainted with people of all walks of life. I respect people's differences, differences of opinion. And as far as what I've done professionally to further my understanding of diversity, I think it goes with, with the profession. You have to be able to accommodate to different demographics, different people from different walks of life, economically and otherwise. So it's, it's, it comes with the culture. We have a multicultural, very diverse country that we live in. So you have to, you have to be able to, to speak to different people and different, different ideas.
Okay, Jessica.
Doris.
Chris, please describe a time when you took a new job that required a much different set of skills from what you had. How did you go about acquiring the needed skills?
Well, this, I'm going to repeat probably what Will and Diane heard from the last meeting. I transitioned from the treasurer's office at Washtenaw County. Equalization was basically very sudden. It was not expected. It wasn't something that I prepared for. In fact, I had no idea what assessment meant before, before I actually was able to start learning on the job, starting with the very first day, taking a manual out, looking through the manual, trying to get myself familiar with what the assessment means. I ended up doing some self-training. There was nobody in the office to help me become this personal property auditor. We also used an outside company at the time via state grant to handle some audits for the county because the state was very much interested in restarting the personal property audits, personal property program state audit. I used that opportunity to shadow them as they were working and learning, you know, from them and was able to come up with an audit program for the county because I had zero information to start with. There was nothing in the files, nothing that would have given me some kind of a rough outline of what an audit program was. Nothing. So I, that was an opportune time because the state had, had this grant pushed forward, applied for the grant for the county. I headed that up and then via that whole opportunity, I was able to learn the job and continue that work for years or for more, even now.
Okay, Will.
Chris, what would your current supervisor say were your greatest strengths?
I think, I think they would say the fact that I'm knowledgeable about what I speak on. I, I make myself available to my coworkers to, to train, to help, to assist. I think you would say that, in fact, I was looking at, at an application that I put a couple of years ago to the Leadership Development Program and it had some of those, some of those very things. He, he happened to mention those, those things. So that I'm knowledgeable, that I try to speak from, from a position of knowledge, that I'm willing to learn from others. Especially if somebody comes in with, with absolutely, you know, a different insight, I'm not going to just say, hey, this is it. I know things and I've got nothing. I don't like to take that approach in life. I like to learn from other people, to surround myself with people that are knowledgeable.
What, what would your supervisor say are your challenges?
Well, maybe that I'm driven and sometimes if I've got a focus, you know, I can be very, a very, laser focused on it. And maybe sometimes people might find it a little bit, a little bit strong. But it's because I want a good product. I want good work and, and the effort that the department or the organization puts together is solid and not half-hearted. That, that's how I like, I like to do things well because if they're done well, I take satisfaction in my work. I like to go back and see, well, that was a good, a job well done versus going back and saying, wow, I wish I would have done things different or I wish I would have done a little more to, to make, to have a better outcome.
Before we get to the last couple of questions, I just wanted to ask if any members of the Board of Trustees have another question that they might want to ask that's a follow-up to anything that was previously asked or clarification of Chris.
What?
Donna.
How, or have you ever had to deal with a situation, a difficult situation, let's say, a coworker? And how did you handle it?
I mean, we have a very positive working relationship at the county. I would say that's the biggest strength of my boss's, my boss's biggest strength is hiring. I think he does a good job of getting good people in the position. But we've had situations, you know, where certain employees can be challenging to work with. And one particular situation I mentioned at the last meeting was a specific, a certain employee tends to be frustrated, gets frustrated easily. And it has nothing to do with the coworkers and the work. Just gets frustrated and sometimes he, he finds people to vent frustration at and for seemingly unrelated reasons. And it just depends, it's somebody else in the office. And at one particular situation, that was me. And I had to, I had to push back because, as a matter of habit, I don't like to push back just right away. But if, if, if it ends up being a distraction, it ends up causing too much of disruption in the office, I had to push back and say, wait a minute, you're getting frustrated about something that has absolutely nothing to do with my work. I just want, want you to know that. I am not responsible for that work. You're getting frustrated, you're getting frustrated for no reason. And we just had to put a stop to it and it stopped. And it didn't, it didn't go further than that. He didn't ramp it up. It was almost like he's testing who he can vent with. So and sometimes he just has to, or people that have those tendencies have to be put in their place. I, I don't, I don't look for conflict. I, I prefer not to be in conflict, but if people create a problem, then sometimes you have to just address it your way.
That one, but thank, thank you.
Okay.
Whoops, Chris, I had one more question. So Chris, earlier when we, when you were talking about special assessment districts, I think you mentioned, if I'm correct, tax increment financing? Is that right?
Yeah, TIFs, my, my mind was in a different way.
No, I'm just, I was interested in what your experience is with those, with tax increment.
I did a little bit of tracking for the county on those, like, you know, the Washtenaw, I'm sorry, the Jackson Quarter VDA. Washtenaw County is, is not filled, but has various quarter improvement authorities, VDA's, TIFs, and, and just the capture of dollars, depending on whatever agreement was worked out at the inception of the TIF, TIF agreement. So I, I've tracked those for the equalization report for a couple of years and just pulling together values for, you know, how much money or how many dollars are being captured by the various units, by the various, uh, VDA's, TIFs, et cetera. So I, I have some exposure.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, Chris, now's the time for you to tell us anything else that you think we should know about you that will aid us in making a decision.
Well, I mean, just that I bring professionalism to my work. I like to do things well. I like to treat people with respect. And then eventually that, that comes back around, you know, people treat you with respect. I try to do a good job and have been, you know, I've received acknowledgement for that in the past and I hope to continue that into the future.
And what questions do you have for us, for any, anybody here?
None that I can think of at this time.
What happens next, Chris, is the Board of Trustees will deliberate and will make the decision on which of our candidates will be the best candidate to hire. And an offer of employment will be contingent upon a background check, including reference checking, et cetera. So I will keep you, we will keep you informed. And I want to thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Chris. It was really good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. We are just here with ourselves and interested public.
Right. So what I had said in the email is that we should think about what this candidate, what his, his experience and education, et cetera, how that fits what the requirements of the position are. So he did not talk about it, but you can see from his resume that he does have the Michigan Master Assessing Officer designation.
Which is the Level 4, correct?
Level 4, right. That's correct.
Since 2016?
Yes. So what I didn't know about that is you have to have, you know, ongoing education, continuing education credits for that, just like a lot of other certifications. So even during COVID, he has managed to, to, to do that. We talked about that in, in the first interview. So I just wanted to see if there were any reactions that anybody had concerning this candidate and how he meets or does not meet the, the requirements of the position. Jessica.
Um, I thought he met the, the basic requirements of the position. I thought he was really nice to me. I like that he has experience in Washtenaw County with some familiarity. um, with some familiarity. Um, I, I don't know enough about, you know, how big of a jump it would be to go from equalization to assessing, but that's a question I have. Um, and additionally, um, I would say I, he didn't speak to, and in fairness, we didn't directly ask about, we have at least three years of increasingly responsible management or supervisory experience. And I didn't hear, um, him speak to that. So that's another question I would have.
Okay, anybody else want to share?
I think he's very, very qualified. You know, I thought he was very honest about some of the areas he's not, you know, worked in. But that's because of his position at the county. They perhaps are more, uh, departmentalized, so, so to speak, it may not be the best word to describe, but
That makes sense.
Does this piece in equalization, someone else does this piece, but they have a general overall knowledge because it all has to come together at the end of the year, so. I think he's well qualified.
Yeah, I wanted to go back, Jessica, and, and refer to our first interview with him. Chris, where we did ask the question about, um, what is the largest number of employees you've supervised? And what were their job functions? And he shared that for a short period, he served as an interim. And I don't remember, I didn't write interim what? So it's whatever his boss, his, his supervisor's title. And he supervised, uh, 10 to 12 people. Um, and he assigned work and approved time reports. And I don't know if Will or Donna wrote anything else or had anything else to share about that.
I was just looking at my notes to see what I had written down. He talked about, in the first round, he talked about, um, delegation and, um, how to be supportive. Um, and he talked a lot about teaching others and how that helps the organization. But he also talked about how he viewed assessment as a, a quote lone wolf, unquote, profession. Um, and that, um, I think this was in the context of a question about mentors. And he said he, he hadn't had mentors, but he also hasn't sought out mentors. But he learns from, um, observing. And I think he did talk about that, um, this evening.
Kathy?
I thought he was qualified and his responses were appropriate, reasonable. In some areas, when he didn't have experience, he stated that, which is appropriate. So, you know, he's, he's not, some job interviewees expand more on their responses and he didn't. And, but that's okay, I think. I mean, so I would be very comfortable with him.
Very honest in his responses, I thought.
I thought so too.
Diane?
Yes.
A, a process question?
Yes.
At the end of this first interview, you asked board members if we had additional questions and there were two. Um, should we ask those two same questions?
Yeah.
To what person?
Yeah, and I know one of them, I wrote it down.
What, what is your preference?
Situation, pardon? What were you?
What is your preference about the process?
I think, um, one of them was a difficult situation with a coworker. And I don't remember, I don't know if I
The second was the one with experience with TIPS.
With TIPS.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yes, we should ask the same question.
Okay.
And I was, you know, I was, um, thinking that if there was a clarification question, like, or something like that, rather than an additional question. But yes, to be fair, we will ask the, the second candidate the same question.
Perfect.
And I can, I will add that to mine.
Anybody else have anything to say?
We're a half hour ahead of schedule.
I know. I'm gonna, I'm going to contact the other candidate. So we can take a little break until that happens. Um, and, um, I'm gonna mute myself because I'm gonna give her a call.
Okay, how long of a break should we take, Diane?
Um, I would say maybe 10 minutes. Well, let's see, it's right before seven, by 7:05 at the latest. I'll ask her to come in at seven and then we'll have five minutes in case not everybody's here.
Okay, great. We've got about eight members of the public here too, so I just wanted to make sure.
So how about if we ask her to, um, join at seven o'clock?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Hello, Arsha.
Hi, how are you?
I, I am fine. We're, we'll get started again in just a minute.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, everybody is here. Recording in progress. Thanks, Warsha, for joining us this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Yes, we're, um, I'm going to have each person introduce themselves and, and, um, let, let you know their role here in the township. And, um, I am the HR consultant, Diane Benson. So, Will?
Hi, I'm Warsha. It's good to see you again. I'm the supervisor for Syo Township.
Donna?
Oh, me? I'm sorry. Hi, Warsha. Good to see you again. I'm the treasurer.
Good to see you, Donna.
Warsha, I'm Jessica Flintoff. I'm the township clerk.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Jackie Corto. I'm the, on the Board of Trustees, newly elected this year.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Knoll. I'm a trustee. This is my second for you, Karen.
Oh, congra, um, good to meet you.
Thank you. You too.
And we, we have two trustees that were not able to join tonight. So, um, like we, we did before when we met, was it just last week? Um, we're gonna ask you a variety of questions. Some to talk about your experience. Um, some questions are situational, some are, um, based on your past experience. And we will give you ample opportunity to ask questions of us at the end. And each member of the board will ask a question and we'll kind of do a round robin where we'll take turns asking questions. So to get started with, um, Kathy has the first question.
Okay. Could you tell us about your work experience and how it fits into the township assessor position?
I started, uh, I started working as the residential property appraiser at Bloomfield Township. And, um, been taking classes to get my levels, level three, level four. And as I got my levels, I had increased in my duties also. So, um, I do all the special assessments. Um, I did, uh, tribunals. I do, uh, the lake boards, uh, the road assessments. And then, um, I do all the drawings, the inspections for half of the township and the other appraiser does the other half. And, um, as, uh, once I got my level four, I started doing, um, commercials. Um, I went out, measured, uh, did the drawings, uh, also looked up, uh, we do our commercial on the income approach. And, um, then when the township decided to, to do community sharing, or I don't know what you call it, but, um, they went out and, uh, they contracted with Sylvan Lake to do their assessing. And I told my boss that I would like to be considered as the assessor for it. So, once I became that, then I learned how to do all the reports, the ECFs, uh, all the county reports that I need to do and turn in. Um, I had to deal with their treasurer, their clerk. Um, also their homeowners and do, run the board of review, which I was able to do. So, um, I feel I can, uh, I can do that assessor position and whatever I don't know, I'm a hard worker and I learn fast.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you.
So, Warsha, after you learned about this opportunity, what prompted you to take the next step to apply?
Um, I feel that I've learned everything I can at Bloomfield Township. Um, we don't have that much commercial, whatever there is, I do know it. I would like to learn more. Um, and I noticed that Syo, um, Syo, is it Syo? Uh, maybe I'm pronouncing, Syo Township has some, um, some PUDs, they have some agricultural. And you're close to Ann Arbor, so I, I'm hoping that you have more commercial, more industrial. So I want to learn, um, to master those things and
Great. Thank you.
Will?
Uh, Warsha, what would you have liked to do more of in your last position? And what held you back from doing that?
Um, I would have liked to have, um, the stuff I learned in class about the, um, more commercial, more industrial. Uh, we don't have any downtown authorities or IFTs, any of those kind of things. Um, we do have some golf courses, but I've never
Thank you.
Kathy?
Hey, here. What things do you consider when a taxpayer asks you for an adjustment to their assessment?
I first ask them, um, is our information correct? Have you taken a look at the card, uh, the record card? Is our information correct? If it's not correct, do you think the square footage is incorrect? I go out and I ask them, can I re-measure your house? I'll do a re-inspection. And, um, if they say yes, I go ahead and do that. And if they still disagree, then I work up a, an appraisal. I show them the sales in their area and similar. And, um, and then I, if they still disagree, I tell them the steps that they have to go through in order to formally protest. You know, go to the board of review, go to the tax tribunal. If they need help finding comps, I tell them the best ones that I would use and I show them my grid as to what I do. There's been, um, a couple of times where I actually gave the appraisal grid to the homeowner to help them out.
Thank you.
Hey Jess? Sure. Uh, Warsha, what types of commercial or industrial property are you most experienced assessing?
Restaurants. We have a lot of, uh, restaurants, uh, strip malls, um, the single-story like IHOPs, uh, McDonald's, like that.
Great. Thank you.
Can you help us un-, look, I was going to say, can that, can you help us understand the disabled veteran property tax exemption and how it works?
Um, the, the, the veteran, um, receives a letter from the VA which tells them that they are 100% disabled and unable to work. They receive that letter every single year. And if they get that letter, then they're automatically, uh, get that exemption, which brings them down to zero. Um, we also send them letters as reminders, uh, I think in October or November, that hey, look out for this letter, please give it to us. If there's a, a veteran that passed away during the year and the widow is still there, we still keep on hand the letter that the veteran uses. And in the, the class that I had, we were told by the tax tribunal that we don't, they don't have to have a letter, the, the widow does not. So, we continue that exemption as long as she is still living there.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna, it's your turn.
First of all, I apologize, Warsha. It was not good news, so I had to take it.
Oh, that's okay. I, I hope everything's okay.
It's not. So, I had to take it. Okay, let's go on. This is your night, your time. Um, how do you handle the assessing of routine maintenance and repairs on residential property?
Um, we make a note of it. Uh, if they did a kitchen remodel, bathroom remodel, they do a re-roof or new shingles, whatever. We just make a note of what they do. If, for example, they went from a half bath to a full bath, we change that on our record card. And whatever that difference is, we'll go on as new. But otherwise, we don't add anything new. And it automatically gets readjusted when it sells. So... Because as, as maintenance, you're not supposed to, uh, raise them at all. They're allowed to do that without being raised.
Okay. Thank you.
Warsha, can you please tell us, what was the most challenging property you have evaluated?
Challenging? Um, we have an area, a gated community called, uh, Turtle Lake. Um, and there, it's an exclusive. And one of the first houses they did was a showcase house, um, for, I think, the homes, homeowners, something that they were going to showcase and show in the digest and all of that. And that was over 10,000 square feet. They had Jerusalem stone. I've never seen anything like it. They, it was a double lot on a lake, on a private lake. Um, so that was truly challenging. Um, I was way under-valued, but there's just, I mean, we've made it an A plus 30, and it still was undervalued by at least a couple of million. But there's nothing else that I could do. I just put pictures and did the best I can.
Hey Kathy?
Okay. How do you stay up to date with changing assessing requirements, new legislation, recent court cases, and best practices?
Um, I'm, I'm a member of the Oakland, uh, all the associations, the MMA, the Oakland County, um, and the Macomb County. Um, we used to be, uh, part of Wayne County, but I think, um, somehow we got dropped, uh, from that and we're not. So, I keep a track with all the latest publishings. I'm also on the list with the, uh, MTT. So, anytime there's judgments, all of that, we get an email about the latest cases. So, I read up on it. I read up on the, uh, MMA book that, that comes out with all the cases and the case law, all of that. And I try to go to as many of the assessor meetings as I can to talk to people to keep up to date on everything.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica?
Warsha, could you please tell us about your experience with special assessment districts?
I first, uh, um, in 2006, I knew nothing about it. Um, so when Bill Griffin became the assessor, he challenged us and he's like, Warsha, um, I want you to learn what special assessment is. I had never heard of it. So, I read up on all the case laws. I did that and then, um, did my first, uh, lakeboard. And, um, I found a whole subdivision that was missed. So, that was, uh, challenging to get that, send out letters to everybody. And then, as I kept going, I learned more and more about the case laws. I worked closely with the clerk and the, uh, attorney for all the different lakeboards. Then, when we went to the road assessments, um, we do the bonding also for the subdivisions. And then they pay us back, so they can do it in 15 years. And, um, learned, uh, learned about that too, 51%. And to, uh, make sure I have extra properties and more than just the right 40, you know, the 49.99, I make sure I have like 51 or 52, just in case a couple get thrown out. So...
Um, one other question about assessing appraisal. Do you, can you tell us your experience with a TIF? Tax increment financing?
I, I don't have any experience with that.
I just learned that term tonight for the first time. So...
We don't, we don't have any of those in the township.
Okay.
I learned about it in class, but that's about it when I...
Um, we're going to move on to some other questions away from the assessing type questions. And I did want to ask you first, um, about, can you tell us about a difficult situation that you had with a coworker and how it was resolved?
In general, um, don't really have a difficult time with any of the coworkers. My departments, uh, that I work with, um, we work pretty well. We work together in tandem. Um, the, um, just a couple of times, um, I was, uh, I was charged with, uh, training a coworker. She, she got her level two. Um, and, um, I think the only concern there was that my style of doing something or, uh, doing the drawings, um, she wasn't understanding me very well. And I'm not, I'm not trained as a teacher. I did the best I could. So, I had to tell my boss that, look, I did the best I could. I don't think she's understanding my style of doing it. So, then he moved on to the other appraiser and I think maybe she was able to understand Jim, Jim's way a little bit better than mine.
I guess I have one more assessing type question. Um, in layman's terms, can you explain the principle of highest and best use? And its importance when you value property?
Um, in layman's term, highest and best use is what is the best that you can get for that property? Um, in terms of what you use it for, um, what, what it can do? Is it, uh, is it better to have a house on there? Is it better to have commercial? Is it better to just let it be a parking lot or a park? That, that's what highest and best use is.
Thank you so much. Going to turn it over to Will.
Warsha, tell us about a time when you thought someone was not listening to you. What did you do?
We have a, we had a young coworker. We called him Probie. He had just graduated. And, um, I'm trying to show him that Bloomfield Township measures to the inch. He's like, but when I was a co-op, we did it to the half-foot. I'm like, but Mitchell, you're not at wherever you were. I go, you're at Bloomfield Township. People like to go to the inch. And he goes, no, 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 no. So, I went over to him. I took out the measuring tape and I go, this is an inch. This is a half-foot. We have to go to the inch. The people will come and help you measure to the inch. And that's what you have to do. That's what they want. That's what you have to do. And he's like, really? I know what an inch is. I go, okay. And that's what we have to do. So, then he heard me and he started doing that.
Thank you. Donna?
Tell us about a time when you used your technical knowledge to solve a problem that appeared to be unsolvable.
Like, like my measuring or, um, like that, you mean, a drawing?
Well, a situation you may have had, whatever it may be.
We had a very unusual house with a lot of different angles. Not a single one was 45 degrees or 30 degrees or, or even number, or 60 degrees. Um, each angle was like maybe 31, was like 42 and, you know, uh, one was 25 degrees. It was just crazy. The guy liked his angles and his different roof lines. And I just had a hard time with it. So, the appraiser who was appraising that house for him, the, uh, the homeowner and the bank, he was also having a hard time with it. So, the two of us had different, uh, instruments that measure angles. And we went out together and we worked on it all afternoon together. Cause his, his blueprints were, he was having the same situation as me. So, we collaborated and, uh, finally drew the house.
Awesome. Good.
Thank you. Um, Jackie?
Can you please, an example of a time we had to change project priorities, how did you do it?
Um, I generally, um, go by the deadline and when the person, um, when that project needs to be done. So, if I'm in a project and it can wait a couple of days, then I'll put it aside and do the one that's due today. And if I need help, then I'll ask somebody else in the office to help me and we make sure we get it done.
Hey Kathy?
Hey. What have you done to further your knowledge about diversity? Have you included diversity in your professional development? And how have you demonstrated what you have learned?
We have, uh, I mean, there's, there's no... I guess we didn't really need any policy or anything. Um, that's not in my scope. But diversity, um, I deal with all different kinds of homeowners that are in the township. We have a wide variety from, um, African-Americans to Asians to, um, uh, um, how do I? I don't want to offend anybody, but, um, old, young, you know, uh, all, all different kinds, all different Indians. Um, I have no issues with anybody. I, I, my roommate in college was an African-American. And so, um, one of my best friends is, uh, uh, a white lady for, for sake of, sorry to be offensive, but, um, for, is that. And then, um, I've had friends that are, uh, from Hong Kong. Um, I have Indian friends. Uh, so I have, I have no issues with any other ethnicity. In fact, I think it's a good thing because I learned a lot about that person, their backgrounds, their cultures, where they're coming from, um, their way of thinking, all of that. Um, the most trouble I have is with other Indian people. And it, it was, it's getting so bad that my boss says I don't have to, uh, help them anymore.
Could you explain?
Well, technically, their taxes pay my salary, so I work for them. And in India, I mean, having a servant is a very, uh, everybody has that. It's a very easy thing. It's not as expensive as it is here to get a cleaning woman or, or, or butler or anything like that. So, they feel that I work for them, therefore I'm their servant. And so, I get treated, um, not so nice. And so, my bosses told me that I don't have to wait on them. Because he got a lot of complaints at the beginning just about me. When somebody else answered the same question, then there was no complaint. So, he said I didn't need to do it. So, it was a reverse discrimination on me. Sad to say.
Jess?
Could you describe a time when you took a new job?
Can you please, example of a time we had to change project priorities? How did you do it?
I generally go by the deadline and when the person, when that project needs to be done. So if I'm in a project and it can wait a couple of days, then I'll put it aside and do the one that's due today. And if I need help, then I'll ask somebody else in the office to help me. And we make sure we get it done.
Hey Kathy.
Hey. What have you done to further your knowledge about diversity? Have you included diversity in your professional development? And how have you demonstrated what you have learned?
We have, I mean, there's no... I guess we didn't really need any policy or anything. That's not in my scope. But diversity, I deal with all different kinds of homeowners that are in the township. We have a wide variety from African Americans to Asians to... How do I? I don't want to offend anybody, but old, young, you know, all different kinds, all different Indians. I have no issues with anybody. My roommate in college was an African American. And so one of my best friends is a white lady for sake of, sorry to be offensive, but is that. And then I've had friends that are from Hong Kong. I have Indian friends. So I have no issues with any other ethnicity. In fact, I think it's a good thing because I learned a lot about that person, their backgrounds, their cultures, where they're coming from, their way of thinking, all of that. The most trouble I have is with other Indian people. And it's getting so bad that my boss says I don't have to help them anymore.
Could you explain?
Well, technically, their taxes pay my salary, so I work for them. And in India, I mean, having a servant is a very... Everybody has that. It's a very easy thing. It's not as expensive as it is here to get a cleaning woman or butler or anything like that. So they feel that I work for them, therefore I'm their servant. And so I get treated not so nice. And so my bosses told me that I don't have to wait on them. Because he got a lot of complaints at the beginning just about me. When somebody else answered the same question, then there was no complaint. So he said I didn't need to do it. So it was a reverse discrimination on me. Sad to say.
Jess. Could you describe a time when you took a new job that required a much different set of skills than you had? How did you then go about acquiring the needed skills?
I got a, when I was in high school, I got a job at Joann Fabrics. Knew nothing about fabrics, knew nothing about sewing, any of that. Just from whatever, I know what a sewing machine was, just from watching my mom. I could help her cut something if she marked it out, but that was it. And I ended up getting a job at Joann Fabrics. So I took a class on making a simple skirt. I took a home economics class in school so that I could learn how to sew and do all of that. Then when I was in college, I took quilting classes. So I would know more. And I worked there for a couple of summers. And I thought I became pretty good. I still do the quilting now.
Thank you. Will.
Warsha, what would your current supervisor say were your greatest strengths?
I'm a hard worker. I get all my work done when he wants it done. I get it done on time. And 99.9% of the time, it's accurate. He can count on me.
What would your supervisor say were your challenges?
I'm a little emotional. When I get criticized a lot, I get a little emotional. You know, I take it personally when he's like, it's not personal, Warsha. They're just complaining about everybody. But just that kind of stuff. But I do... I think that's about it.
Okay. At this time, I have a couple other questions to end with. But I wanted to see if anybody on the Board of Trustees has any question that they want to ask that helps to clarify an answer that you gave? Anybody? Jessica.
Sure. Just to follow up, a question when I asked that you speak a bit about your experience with special assessment districts. I see on some bullet points in your resume, you provided a little bit of detail about that. But could I just ask you to describe a little more in detail what some of the steps from A to Z? What experience you have with specific steps from establishing an SAD forward?
Okay. For the lake boards, lake board assessments, I had to, it was when I first started, almost every single lake, there was no clear map as to what property should be in that lake district or not. So I had to go to county records and research whether they were deeded lake access. Are they riparian? I did all of that for every lake. And then when the petitions came in, we had to form a couple of lake boards on the new ones. I researched, are they the owners? I verified their signatures, calculated the percentages. And then if they do the assessments, once they have their budget, I apply that, figure out whether it's three years, four years. And then when they go to the tribunal, I do defend them also. And for that, what we do is you have to do an appraisal before the assessment was spread. And then afterwards to show the increase and whether the benefit is worth it or not. So I've done that.
Interesting. Great.
We've done that for the road assessments too.
Great. Okay. Anybody else? Now's the time, oh, Donna.
I have one. And maybe this was addressed when I had stepped out. In this position, you are head, would be head assessor, responsible for having the roll ready to prepare the tax bills, et cetera. Have you done any piece of that in your career to this point?
I did it for Sylvan Lake. I prepared the assessment roll, had it ready for the board of review to review, sign off. I did that for them.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Warsha, one clarification. How many years have you done that for Sylvan Lake via this contract?
I just have my resume here, just a minute. Since 2016.
Great. Thank you.
Now we've come to the time when you have the opportunity to tell us anything else you would like us to know about you, your experience, that will aid us in making a decision.
I'm a hard worker. I like to learn new things. I like to work with all different kinds of people. And I'm just looking forward to the challenge and getting to know everybody.
And what questions do you have for us?
When is, when are you looking to have the new position start, the new person?
Well, our current assessor is retiring. It would be nice to have a little bit of overlap with him.
Yeah. So when is he retiring?
The end of July, is it? August. Thank you. I gave him another month, the end of August.
Perfect. Okay.
So sometime in the summer. We're almost to the summer right now, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anything else?
No, just looking forward to, I saw that you guys had a lot of parts and stuff and stuff. So looking forward to hopefully coming out there.
Okay. So the Board of Trustees, now it's the Board of Trustees' job to deliberate the candidates and make a decision to hire the best candidate for this position. And offer of employment will be contingent upon background screening, including reference checking. We will not call any references until we come to that point. So I will keep you informed of the process. And we'll certainly get back to you one way or the other. And we all thank you very much for your time, Warsha.
Very much.
Have a good evening.
Good to meet you. Thank you, Warsha.
Good to meet you. Bye.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Okay. Time for the deliberation. And Warsha, as the other candidate, Chris, does have the level four. Which she did talk about.
And she got that in 2008? I'm looking at the education. Is it the? No, I'm sorry, the MMAO in 2017? Yeah, okay.
Jessica.
Yeah, I think, you know, another really strong candidate for sure. I like that she has had experience being an assessor. And the city of Sylvan Lake is a tiny little place of, you know, fewer than 2,000. But I like that she has had the experience of being the assessor and being responsible for the whole process for several years. I also appreciate that it sounds like she's, you know, really a person who's, you know, does it all, big and small. Putting the drawings into the SNA, measuring the inch, going out there, talking with residents. I'd like that she also has furthered her education. And I like that she's professionally, seems like she's been ambitious in what I understand to be a pretty narrow field. It looks like she's been at Bloomfield Township for 20 years. But despite being at one place for 20 years, it looks like she's done a lot at that one place and expanded to being an assessor. And so she seems like a lifelong learner, and that was also good.
Well, I was impressed with her. Her answers were complete. She went beyond the bare minimum and added a lot to her answers. As Jessica said, she has significant experience. She's worked as an assessor in Sylvan Township for four years. She has experience with SADs. She repeatedly talked about situations where she went the extra mile to support residents. And I think our residents would appreciate that. She has, in her current position, progressively increased her duties and her education. So I mean, I was very impressed with her. When she talked about these lake boards, brought back memories. Because I grew up in Northern Oakland County and there are lots of small lakes in Northern Oakland County. And I had forgotten about the lake boards that were around where I grew up. So anyway, I was very impressed with her.
So you're saying, Kathy, that they can be challenging?
The lake boards? No. I mean, I'm just thinking how beautiful the lakes are.
Oh, gotcha.
I was reminiscing.
You were reminiscing. Okay. That's accepted.
I'm curious, Jacqueline, what your impression is or was?
Thank you. Well, I was pondering that. I feel like her experience better matches our needs. I think they're both very strong candidates. But she has done more of what we are looking for. And at the same time, still has the enthusiasm to keep growing into the things that she will still need to learn. I did appreciate the others, the other candidates' experience and skills. And also understand that different people have more of a sense of reserve. I thought he was very knowledgeable and very straightforward and very honest when he didn't have the experience. And I appreciated that she was able to offer more detail to go beyond what we asked and really highlight some of the ways that her experience matches what we're looking for.
Yeah, I agree, Jacqueline, with, I mean, in some ways, it's sort of, each of the candidates sort of illustrates a different sort of personality. But you're right. I think they both have qualifications. They both seem to understand and have the knowledge. She was, Warsha was more articulate, I guess, in being able to sort of convey the breadth of experience that she has. But I agree too that she has, I think, in some ways, it seems like anyway, from her answer, she has in some ways, experience that's a better match with what we're looking for in terms of the commercial, you know, sort of a range of different kinds of assessments that would be necessary and the kinds of work experience that the assessor would be responsible for, all the different, you know, aspects of it, the reporting and so on. I think she's done, even if she's done it on a relatively modest scale, she's done more of it. She's got more of that breadth of experience.
And just to your point too, Will, I just like that she's also had the experience with the board of review, had a more complete understanding of the veteran's exemption of seeing it all through and, you know, assessing, getting the whole process done. You know, I think is, you know, I'm sure, you know, we're a much more complex place than Sylvan Lake. But perhaps less complex than Bloomfield Township. So I have a confidence that she would do a really good job and would be supportive of making a conditional offer to her pending the reference checks. I'd like to hear a little bit from Diane about the, how we would do the review of the writing sample. And of course, contingent on the background checks.
I did look back on my notes from the previous interview because one of the questions we asked was about supervision and management. She has not formally managed any staff in her roles except for a community, a large, very large community event that took place in Detroit where she managed a lot of students that put on this event.
I thought she had...
Did you write something else, Will?
Well, I'm just, now you're prompting me to go back. But I thought she said she had experience managing co-ops.
Co-ops, that's right. I was thinking students.
Were those, was that part of that event?
No, I think that's an addition to.
Okay, all right. So she sort of managed, I guess that would be sort of the equivalent of like an intern or apprentice, I guess. But not, she hasn't had a lot of experience managing staff. Not that, you know, we have a huge staff here for her to manage, but...
But a very valuable staff.
Yes. Very valuable staff.
They're listening to us right now.
I don't mean to diminish the staff. It's just it's not a very, you know, it's not a huge staff. Not a lot of people. That's what I mean. But I guess in some ways, they're both, neither of them really has a lot of supervisory experience.
Correct.
So are we, I guess I have a question. Are we able, we have quorum. Are we able to sort of reach an agreement on a selection of who we think is the strongest of the candidates and to proceed at this point?
So do you have time to think about it? Sleep on it? I don't know.
Let me just make a process observation. And then is, you know, I think, again, we don't have rules of order. Typically, majority is the majority of the seven, so it would be four. Historically in Sciow Township, even on large decisions, Sciow Township has operated with the majority of those present, which would be three. That said, given the nature of something like this, I would, you know, hope that we would have four or five in agreement if we were to make a motion for, to give somebody a conditional offer of employment.
Ideally, it would be unanimous, but...
Right, the five.
Right.
But at least four, I would say, I would just say, I wouldn't want to go forward on a decision like this with what has been Sciow's practice of just the simple majority of those present with just three.
Yeah, I agree. Well, is there, I guess, a motion and we can see where we stand?
You know, this is a hard call because number one, we've never done a process like this before. You know, this is a hard call because number one, we've never done a process like this before. We're hiring an employee, but we're finding ourselves in a, an agenda item position. So it's really difficult. It's, you know, both excellent candidates. That's why I wondered if we could sleep on it, but maybe we can't because of the process that we're doing.
Well, Donna, I mean, if you need more time, I, you know, certainly understand that. I will say, this is similar to what we've done with a Utilities Director and also our Fire Chief. And if you, you know, recall, you know, this would just be a conditional offer of employment, you know, pending the reference checks. It would be then finalized if it all went through and the candidate said yes. The board could also confirm that. If it didn't work out, the board could come back and make a conditional offer of employment to a second candidate.
That's true. That's true.
Diane, what would the process be though with the writing samples? Because I want to make sure we don't deliberate outside of an open meeting.
Right. Do the writing samples become part of a background screening?
They could, if we just make it clear here that we would ask Diane, because we've never had an HR consultant. So instead of having, you know, all of the board evaluate the writing, we could ask Diane to evaluate the writing samples on behalf of the candidate. I'd be comfortable with that if others would be.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Jacqueline?
Just a quick process question for Diane. In this type of interview setting, do people normally come up with a decision at the end of just seeing the two candidates or are, do you have? I mean, I know there's already been a first screen. Are there usually any more steps or are we ready to decide?
Well, I think with the first screening, we did involve both Jim, Murdy and Andrea.
And Christie.
And Christie in that. So generally, I like to include, you know, the people that will work most closely with the individual, whether it's, you know, somebody who works for that person, which would be Andrea. You know, ultimately, it is the board's decision. I'm comfortable with either candidate. You know, there's the background screening to go through first.
Jacqueline?
The follow-up on that, I mean, is that, are appropriate for us to invite those other folks from assessing, the Murdy or Andrea, to share their perspectives?
Well, you're welcome to ask them. My understanding, and just correct me if I'm wrong, because I did ask Christie when she was here earlier today. I said, just to be clear, you guys just did a screening. You didn't come back with an evaluation?
Right.
Of one versus the other. So Jackie, we can totally ask who happens to be here, but it is Jim and Andrea and not Christie.
Oh, not Christie, okay.
Which is okay. I just want to say, you'd be hearing from a couple of people on the spot who happen to be here, but I can bring them in.
We did do some debriefing after the screening, the initial interview round. So there was some discussion, but there was no sort of, you know, prioritization of candidates. It was just sort of, you know, what were people's impressions, what struck them, so on.
And the decision to move the two forward, correct?
Yeah, that much we decided that both of them seemed qualified, yeah.
I mean, I would be very happy to hear views of those who might be working with them or might have been doing the job that they will be doing, however you find that appropriate. I think it would be helpful to get that feedback.
Andrea?
Hello, Murdy?
I'm here.
Hi, Murdy.
I agree with everybody that they're both qualified. They definitely had different styles in terms of their interview. Chris was much more reserved and Wershaw was just very outgoing and bubbly and charming. Just say, would I like to work with more, I probably would say Wershaw right off the bat. She just seems far more, she seems much, much more fun, just on that particular level. Excuse me. From the standpoint of the complexity of the job, I, especially some of the complex properties that SIO has, I, my feeling was that Chris was a little more ready to do those sorts of properties. We do, we do have quite a few rather complex properties, which will be, we already have two tribunal cases this year, including Meyer and the now closed Quality 16 Theaters, which will be immediately on whichever candidate is chosen. It'll be immediately on their plate to deal with. So it's going to have to, whoever is chosen will have to ramp up very quickly to be able to accommodate some of these issues. Wershaw, I thought, was very experienced with the residential aspect. And most, if you look at most townships and cities, well, not so much cities, but townships, most involve agricultural and residential properties. They don't have a lot of commercial and industrial properties and any more of the complex. So in that regard, I'm definitely torn. I think, I think Wershaw is just a very charming, nice person. She would get along with everybody very well at the township, I think, and the taxpayers as well. But I think she, it would be a little bit steeper of a learning curve for some of the complex issues that would have to be brought in right off the bat. So I think that's just my thoughts. As I say, I would be very comfortable to work with either of them. But I think that, I think from the standpoint of the complexity, I think Chris would probably be able to come into it a little bit quicker.
Andrea?
I basically agree with what Jim is saying. Wershaw gave, was very, I guess, I don't want to say powerful, but she convinced me a lot today. And it would make my job as moving in more towards the residential assessing a little easier with someone who knows it in and out, it seems like. But then, we, like Jim had said, we need someone who can maybe fill the holes that we're going to have. And it's more the commercial industrial holes. And then we didn't touch on the GIS, and I know that's another concern that I have. So I basically kind of agree with Jim.
And to be fair, I don't think that we advertised for GIS at all for the position of assessor and that that was contemplated potentially as part of one of the other positions we discussed.
Okay.
Accurate? Yeah.
I don't see any mention of it.
We talked about that in some of the other Community Development or Administrative Services Manager.
Oh, all right, okay.
Well, I know that we discussed that at the first interview a little bit. And not necessarily of a maintenance standpoint, but GIS is a very important tool in using.
Oh, you're right. We did talk about it the first round.
Yes, and unfortunately, it sounded like Wershaw had been, I don't understand the concept, but since she was not allowed, is the way she put it, to have, to touch the GIS. I was a little surprised to hear that someone would not allow them to do that, but, because it's such a valuable tool in doing analysis of markets and assessment neighborhoods. So I was a little surprised that she wasn't allowed. I think she probably would be anxious to do just exactly that. Chris did, was in fact allowed to use it and has used it as an analysis tool. Just to make that clear, that we did talk about it before.
Thank you. I didn't know that had been an expectation. Thank you.
I think, but what I have in my notes is that in Wershaw's case, they outsourced GIS. So they had a part-time consultant. And I know it's about Chris, or that he uses something called ArcMap to plan work. And I didn't understand that. I don't, maybe we should have asked follow-up questions in the first round interviews, but...
ArcMap is a GIS system.
It is a GIS system.
Right, that's the system that SIO Township has.
Okay.
Map. And you would, what you would, most municipalities do is they outsource the maintenance. For instance, splits, divisions, new subdivisions, actually drawing the lines that you see. And then you have the end user, which would be someone who actually uses the GIS system as a tool to analyze, put sales on a map and see how they compare with sales that may be in a comparable area. So it's that aspect that you would expect an assessor or like to see an assessor at least have the knowledge to do some sort of analysis. A geographic analysis as opposed to just strictly from a, let's say, an Excel spreadsheet.
But we didn't advertise that.
Right. We, I think, didn't we talk about a, just mentioned GIS? I, I need...
Jim, if I could just follow up briefly. My notes from what Chris's reply was to this interview was that he said that, you know, he hasn't had a heavily commercial or industrial experience in assessing heavily commercial or industrial areas. He sort of said he has, he had an understanding of the whole gamut, but that really has, his experience in commercial and industrial was more on the personal property audit side. So I guess I'm wondering how, I guess I didn't hear the same thing that you did perhaps in that answer, but maybe part of your thinking about his greater skills and that might have also been in the first interview. I just wonder if you could help me understand how you assess him.
And I think it was, I think he did discuss that more in the first interview. That, I mean, one of the functions of the equalization process, if you, if you don't have enough sales to actually, essentially what they do is they look at the sales compared to how the local unit has assessed those same properties. If you don't have enough sales to do an analysis, a reasonable statistical analysis, then they do, they call it a sample study. And they have their appraisers go out and they'll appraise, excuse me, for instance, say 10 or 15 industrial properties. They'll compare what they appraised the property for with what we appraised the property for. And that becomes the basis for their equalization factors. So they do, as an equalization department, they have to do commercial industrial appraisals. Just as a matter of course, not in the same, at the same level that we do, but they certainly have to do those, or those commercial industrial appraisals. Some of them very complex ones. So it's, I say, that did come a little bit more into play when we were at the first interview. So he would have had the experience just from an equalization standpoint. He's given a sample study of a randomly selected set of industrial or commercial properties and said, you know, do appraisals on this and compare that to what the assessor has done.
Didn't he give an example in the first round of automobile?
Yeah, I think a large Toyota plant, if I'm not mistaken.
The tech center in Mylan.
Yeah, the tech, is that what it was? Okay.
Yeah.
But he didn't bring that up in this, the second interview.
No. On the other hand, I think she has a lot more experience with tax tribunal defenses.
Yes, 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 she did. That's, that was definitely a strength. She's had to go and sit and defend assessments.
And even defending the special assessments, right, Jim?
That, well, defending special assessments as well as residential assessments. So those are both very important things. She definitely has a strength with the residential and the special assessments that Chris does not.
One thing I like about her, if there's a need that she sees, she jumps right in and gets it taken care of, meaning even in the educational aspect. She emphasized that in both of the interviews that she, you know, took the course or reads the manual or whatever it takes for her to be able to do an assigned task and job. That's a plus, a big plus. I think everybody tries, but sometimes it's harder for others.
I agree, Donna. Sometimes what I've done in the past with comparing candidates is we look at what are the requirements in the position? And what is that individual, looking at each individual, what is their experience? What the extent of their experience and what is, you know, whether how many years? Or do they have experience in X? And also, what is the relevant experience they've had? So for example, the Michigan tribunals, both of them have done that. Wershaw has done over 1,000. And I'm not referring to my notes right now. And are they similar kind of tribunals? Are they different? Do they have different things that they've done with the Michigan tribunals? With the commercial properties, Wershaw has done commercial properties. She talked about strip malls, restaurants and country clubs. And then Chris talked about, you know, in our first interview about Toyota, that testing area. So comparing side by side the answers that we have received and kind of do a grid of what the extent and relevance is based on the requirements.
Diane, there's one thing that you were just, you know, as you were presenting these facts. Chris said he did not have tribunal experience, but he had state tax commission, which, yes, it's similar, but it's not the same. Am I right, Jim?
That's correct. Yes. He was, he was looking at the pipeline issue from a completely different basis than, than a, you know, the, basically a courtroom situation, the adversarial. I guess you could say it was adversarial with the tax commission in that particular case, but it's more just trying to come with an agreement and a consensus.
Right.
Than it is just both going in there and putting on your boxing gloves.
You got a couple of those sitting on your desk for the new assessor, right, Jim?
Yes, I do.
The one with the boxing gloves.
Yeah, right.
Well, one of the things that you mentioned, Jim, that I'm thinking about is that whoever comes in is going to have to work really hard. And I guess, you know, and maybe this isn't fair, but my sense is that of the two candidates, that's probably... I, I guess, you know, and maybe this isn't fair, but my sense is that of the two candidates, that's probably Wershaw, who, who sort of strikes me as being the one who came across as sort of like, you know, sort of throwing herself into stuff.
Ambitious.
Yeah, sort of. But, well, and she also, she also had like a, 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 a good explanation for sort of like how to build, you know, how to sort of like, you know, work to put something together, you know, if you were going to make a case at the tribunal, for example, or, or how to methodically sort of get up a, a learning curve really, you know, toward, towards something. And, and I didn't get that same sense from Chris, and I don't know if that, I'm being, if this is partly a function of, of different communication styles, but I, I, I got more of a sense of that kind of approach from Wershaw.
Nope, I, I completely agree. I think I think she would have a, probably a much better handle. I mean, granted, she's only done the small claims tribunals, which is considerably different than the full tribunals, the commercial industrials that are more, the, the small claims are handled usually just in front of a referee who reveres, views things. And the full tribunal is more like a, it used to be you, you sat in front of the full, what they call the full tribunal, was all the members. It would almost be like, you know, s- sitting in front of seven judges. Nowadays, you just have one judge represented at each one of these full tribunal cases, but it's handled just exactly like a, a trial. It's quite, quite different than the claims. But, but nonetheless, the preparation is the same. You have to do a lot of preparation. Most, most full tribunals, you end up hiring appraisers, side appraisers anyways. And where the skill I think comes in or the experience is when to hire an appraiser or when to settle. That's kind of a like the tough balance, I should say. Because when do you want to go, when do you actually want to go into the ring? Hire, hire a, a special specialist attorney? And hire an appraiser and then go to the mat? When do you want to do that? And you have to be able to, when you negotiate, you have to be able to have your facts right. So I think, I think you're absolutely right that Wershaw, what she doesn't, what she lacks in experience in doing that, she certainly would roll up her sleeves in a big hurry. And she'd figure out how to do it.
Jessica.
Sure. Just one comment and then if you would entertain it, Will, I'd offer a motion. One, one comment, and I mentioned this to Diane earlier today. I know in this field of assessing, my understanding is that more and more townships are starting to contract out their assessing. And so we have more and more assessors, you know, assessing for multiple jurisdictions at once, you know, case in point, you know, city of Silvan Lake contracts with Bloomfield Township for their assessing. Our employees, many of them have second jobs related or unrelated to their work here. So we certainly have no prohibition on that. But I would just say for this and any other positions with the township, I would just want to make sure that we don't have not even, of course, not a, a real or appearance conflict of interest, but any competition for the person's time. And, and to make that really clear in our personnel policies, if it isn't already, because assessing time is assessing time everywhere across the state. And we want to make sure that that time is prioritized for us, for anybody that we hire.
So would that be part of a, an employment agreement or?
I'm just, it's just a comment. I, I would say, I would say that would be something that I, I think should be made clear for all employees through our personnel. But it certainly could be the part, a part of any negotiation that we enter into with a through a conditional offer, just because my understanding, Jim and Andrea, is that it's a little more common in your field than it is in some of the other fields.
Yep, we do have people with, I don't say people that are full-time assessors typically want to do that, but it's not unheard of.
Yeah, it's a called conflict of commitment.
Thank you.
When we hire somebody, they are committed to working for Cyo Township. Doesn't mean they can't do work elsewhere, but they're, they are committed first to Cyo Township. So if there's a big project coming up and it requires somebody to work until seven o'clock at night, it's not, they can't come back and say, well, I have to get to my job at Meyer now. You know, they're, they're committed to, to this job.
Right.
And then there's conflict of interest too, and that could be if you're doing other work for Cyo Township other than what you were hired for. So if one of you decided to be the gardener of the township, you know, then we'd have to, we'd have to talk with you. It doesn't mean people can't do it, but it's something that has to be disclosed.
I think the prior clerk did do some gardening for the township.
She did. She did. She, she did a wonderful job.
So have I before. It's fun.
Yep. So it's not unheard of. Well, Jessica, I sensed that you were on the verge of making a motion.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment for the position of township assessor contingent on background screening process, which would include checking references and evaluating writing samples to Wershaw Co. Carney.
Is there support? So we have a motion by Flintoff, support by Noel. Is there further discussion?
I'd also note we have public here, Will.
Oh, yes. Good point. Are there members of the public who would like to comment?
I don't think the public should be allowed to speak at a meeting like this about employing a future employee. They're observing tonight.
You could also, you could ask for public comment now, Will, if you wish, which is our practice, or you could ask for public comment at the end. Donna, I would say, I would, I don't think it's inappropriate for, in any way for the public to comment at this juncture. I would trust, but I would ask and trust ask our public to, of course, be appropriate and sensitive to the fact that this is a publicly recorded meeting. Most of us who have had job interviews don't have to do it in public and don't have to do it when it's recorded. So you know, please be extra sensitive with your comments. But up to you, Will.
I, Donna, I think that actually my recollection is that we did, or that the, the Board of Trustees, when it conducted the interviews for
We did.
Utility, utility director did offer a public comment because I was a member of the public and I commented.
Yes.
So, so I, I, I would like to, and I see someone is raising their hand, so I, I would like to offer the opportunity to the members of the public.
Okay. Pam Boy. Pam?
Hi, thank you. I'll be neutral. I, I actually really wanted to thank Diane Benson. I, I really enjoyed this process today. And I think your expertise in, in this, although I haven't sat through any before, but I really enjoyed the process and I thank you very much, Diane.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Agreed. Thank you, Pam. Any other members of the public like to speak? That's all. Will?
Okay. And I didn't want to, I, I, I want to make sure I didn't cut off any members of the board who had comments. Okay, if there, if there aren't any further comments, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Well, I, I think that meets our standard that we were talking about earlier.
Correct.
Well, if there are, if there is no further business, I think we could have a motion to adjourn.